I'd like to call this meeting of the Yankton Board of City Commissioners to order. Please join me in the pledge.
Our pledge alleges to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine and justice for all.
We have our roll call, please.
Sarda?
Here.
Furtig?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Denoff?
Here.
Mybaum?
Here.
Minor?
Here.
Mayor Hopper?
Here, present.
City Manager Nelson?
Here.
City Attorney Dan Herter?
Here.
We have a quorum. We will continue with our business, and welcome everyone. Number two under routine business is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting November 27th and the work session from November 27th.
Move we approve the minutes for both meetings?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You have before the schedule the bills. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pay the bills.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding the bills? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to number four under routine business is our city manager's report. Amy?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. Just a couple of things to bring forward. This evening to you, I wanted to mention that on Friday, the city held its annual Christmas party, and there we awarded the employee of the year to our transfer station superintendent, Mr. Loray Lee. If you know Loray, you know he's very committed and dedicated and passionate about the transfer station. Really great attitude. Some might not think that would be maybe the place where you would have enjoy your working environment, but he certainly does, and we're proud that he was named employee of the year. So if you see him, congratulate him for that. Also, a couple Christmas items to remind the public of our last meeting of the year will be on Friday, December 22nd at noon at the second floor of City Hall. It is a public meeting. We tend to have a very light agenda. However, it will not be conducted on the fourth Monday of the month here, so everyone is reminded of that. Also, Public Works reminds folks that Christmas paper, wrapping paper, and Christmas cards should not be placed in your recycling. They tend to be full of glitter and glossy material, and so probably put those in your solid waste black roll cart. Also, a Christmas tree pickup will be held on Thursday, January 4th. The city is asking folks to put their Christmas trees in the front curb no later than 7:00 a.m. on January 4th. So that'll be one day. We won't pick up in alleys, and it's only for real trees. I had that question. I thought that was interesting, just real trees, undecorated. So when you're tired of Christmas, you can put your Christmas tree out there without decorations. Also, our food drive is continuing. Thank you all who have participated and brought food. You can bring food in until Friday, and that's going well. So unless there's questions for me, I'll let you get on with your business.
Any questions? Good. Moving on. This is the time and place where we have public appearances. Anybody from the audience would like to bring something up to us, call our attention to it that is not on the agenda? Not, we'll move on to consent items. Number one before you is memorandum 17-264 Pawn Brokers Licenses for 2018.
So moved.
Oh, we're gonna individual. There's only six.
Second.
There's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number two is renewal of private collectors for 2018 memorandum 17-265.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess at the bottom of this, it says roll. It says roll call for the last one and this one. I'm wondering, since they're licenses, if we do roll call or if...
We don't need to, but we will, just to make sure, so thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? From the audience? Roll call, please.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to number three under consent items is the renewal of 2018 city dance license application.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Motion carried. Moving on to number four under consent is the peddler's...
You said yes or no.
Yes, yea. Thank you. Moving on to number four. No, we did four. Did we do four yet?
No.
No. Peddler's license. Thank you, Charlie. Memorandum 17-267.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Number five, another peddler's license memorandum 17-268.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to the last item under consent items, another peddler's license application memorandum 17-269.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to old business number one. This is memorandum 17-273 for the Artech CNC Robotics Project Progress Hearing. Go ahead. State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Eric Ambrosen with Planning District Three here in town. And here we go. Might be short and sweet. If some of you may recall, we did a, we did an application for community development block grant funding to help Artech purchase some welding equipment and provide training for welders in Yankton about five years ago. And about two years ago, there was a demand for CNC robotics skills in the manufacturing workplace. So we did prepare an application for purchasing CNC robotics equipment and to provide training then for that part of the workforce. And we received a grant for about $150,000 to purchase that equipment. And then to match that grant, the Artech and school district were providing space and training for that program. So the money is all spent. So the machinery has been ordered, and actually, Artech has completed one set of courses in that field. And I believe they've graduated eight workers in that area. That's all I'm gonna say.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Awesome program.
It's good for them.
Number two under old business is public hearing for memorandum 17-262 for a budget supplement. And ordinance 1001.
So moved.
Introduce.
We have a motion. We need a second now.
Second.
Sarda's introduce.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to new business. The first item is our library agreement renewal between the city and the Yankton County memorandum 17-252 and resolution 17-63.
I will move the memorandum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Not gonna put you on the spot, Tanya. Okay. Do you have any comments? Are you okay?
I guess, uh... All right, Tanya, Errol. From the Yankton Community Library, I just make a note that we have 967 county cardholders, which is about 16% of our patron base. So I appreciate this partnership, and I'm very glad that everyone involved is willing to move forward with it.
All right, thank you very much.
Is this the same amount as last year?
It might be up a little bit. We started issuing cards to every person in that household. Previously, had been one card per household. So we'll see a little bit of movement this year, and we're gonna track it a little differently so we'll know how many people and how many households next year.
My understanding, they pay $5 out of pocket?
Correct.
And then the county subsidizes the rest?
Right.
And is that every card then? So now before, one household would pay, or...
It's still $5 per household. So it's really just so that we have limits on certain things, like eBooks and computer time, things like that. So it makes it a little bit easier for them to fully access the library if they each have their own card, but it's still the same price for them.
And I did the math. It comes out to about $25 per card that the county's paying right now. And if you are outside of Yankton County, then that would be like the $40 charge. So Bonham County coming in would pay 40 or so.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Number two under new business is the golf board recommendation rate increase for 2018. Consideration of memorandum 17-271.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to number three under new business, a bid award for airport fuel memorandum 17-278.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just question how that compares to last year's rates. I didn't notice they were published in here.
For avgas, low lead 100, it's about a half a cent less than last year, actually. And for jet A fuel, it's about that same amount, quarter of a cent over what it was last year. So about the same rate.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Denoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Aye. Motion carried. Number four under new business, a Riverboat Days request for a funding reallocation memorandum 17-286. Amy, you wanna explain a little bit?
Sure. Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, as you may recall, in 2017, you allocated $25,000 in the BBB fund for Riverboat Days with the direction that that would be utilized for a potential building that the Riverboat Days Committee is working on for storage of all their items. That, my understanding is that project is still continuing. They're just not as far along now as they had thought that they would be at the time of the request. So they're still requesting that funding. However, the Riverboat Days Committee is requesting a $25,000 sponsorship, which they will utilize for the purchase of an outdoor tent to be utilized for the Riverboat Days activities. This is about a 60 by 80-foot outdoor tent that has a life expectancy of about 10 to 15 years, replacing the current large tent that's set up in the middle of the festival, which has been patched and sewed and needs to be replaced. So that won't cover the entirety of the tent, but would cover the lion's share of the costs. John Kraft, as well as Randy Oliver and some of the Riverboat Days Committee folks are here if you have questions of them or of I.
Any questions?
What's the expected timeline on the building? Has that just been pushed off indefinitely, or do you have a game plan there?
We're still moving forward with it. It's, you know, it's always been kind of a long-term goal of ours. We really don't have a timeline, per se. We're still contacting businesses and donors. And I would say as far as getting a shell up and the initial design that we worked with Amy and the city on, I would say we're about a third of the way there. So our concern was if we took this money now and applied it to, say, a foundation or put a down payment on a building, we may be just a bit premature on that, I think. We'd like to get a little bit more fundraised before we actually start digging footings and that kind of thing. So if we're able, you know, we've got some of these other larger expenditures. This tent is a big purchase for us. It's the big tent that's right in the middle of the park. And like she said, it's gonna last about 10 or 15, maybe 20 years if we take good care of it. So our thought is we could maybe apply these funds to that and then shift some of our funds internally to the building fund to offset this, kind of do it that way.
Any other questions?
Would this be something that would just be exclusive to the Riverboat Days Committee? And I guess my question then is really, would other groups be able to utilize this when it's not Riverboat Days? You know, if there was some event going on at the chamber or school or anyone else had?
That may be a possibility in the future. Right now, the way we store the majority of our equipment is in semi-trailers that are parked out in the county in different locations. So those tents are packed up in those trailers.
Here's, John, hold on a second. I don't think your mic is working.
There we go. Is that better? So just because of the storage issue, we're not able to get to those tents easily during the off-season. We need lifts to get them out of the semi-trailers, just because of the size. As we move forward with our building project, would, you know, it would be a possibility then because we'd have easier access to them. But they're pretty hard to work with just because of the size of the tent.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I'm, for three days' use, why don't you just rent a tent as opposed to buying one?
Right. The rental and having someone come set it up over the course of the tent, we can see some savings there. The rental per event over the span of, you know, we can hopefully get 20 years out of this on the upper end. So when you look at the rental cost for the 20 years, you're a little bit farther ahead to own it. And then we can also, like I said, if we do get a building up and we're able to use it for other uses, we're, we can get more than one use out of it. And we have in the past. We have smaller tents that we've set up for Sapa off and on, and then we ended up selling them, one of our old tents, when we replaced it. So now they have that old tent. So we kind of, once they reach their, the end of their life for us, we'll sell them to someone in the community so that they can use them as well.
What did we do for our budget 2018? So we didn't pay 2017? I can't remember. Did we allot 25? So we, okay, so...
I don't, I don't know that there's anything allocated in 18 for Riverboat Days.
No, there wasn't.
So there's 25,000 allocated in 17 and zero allocated in 18.
So this would be coming out of 2015?
17, correct.
And I thought, my thought is that we leave, not fund it, but we stick with, let's fund it for the building when that comes to fruition.
I think that's, that was part of the discussion originally, is that we liked the idea of the building because I think the discussion was, there's possibility for the city to utilize part of it as well.
Right. That is, that's one of the ideas that's being discussed. And, you know, we'd sure like to push that farther down the road as well, some kind of a joint-use facility. I guess our hurdle with the allocation is that it's for 17. So, you know, by the end of this month, our conversations with Al is he's unable to disperse the funds because we don't have a physical receipt to give him for concrete or, you know, starting the building, so...
Don't we just push that into cash carryover? I mean, we're allowed to do that, I assume.
You can certainly reallocate next year. We have a supplement, the budget supplement that you passed. We can do that in the January one, the reappropriation, if that's your choice. I'll add that to the reappropriation supplement in January.
Well, that would be, as with Dave, that would be my choice, is we earmark that for the building, and so I have no problem with that. And that's what I would do in January then, is push it forward into 18.
So is that a motion? Or wait, we have a motion, I guess.
I'm curious about one thing. This is gonna be a big white tent?
Yes.
And there's gonna be no, there's gonna be no signage, no logos, nothing on top of the tent?
No.
It's just gonna be a white tent?
Yep.
The thought of using that as a marketing opportunity? Would Riverboat Days Committee be opposed to having a nice big City of Yankton logo on the top of this tent?
Not at all. It's come up in other discussions. You know, we have, I'm trying to think how many tents we have altogether, but, you know, we're into that phase now that the tents are old enough that we have to start recycling into new tents. And that definitely has come up as a topic, you know, selling some advertising on them, some sponsorships to help pay for the tents, so...
So I can understand wanting to, wanting to stick to what we originally thought, which was 25,000 towards a building. These are funds coming out of the BBB. And I like the idea of using this space where 100,000 people, over the course of a couple days, I don't know exactly what those numbers are, would get to see something. Something that could potentially benefit the BBB in some way, whether it's Meridian District, something like that, City of Yankton, I don't know. But the committee would be open to something like that, taking advantage of all that white space.
Sure.
Anybody else? Is there a motion? You don't really necessarily need one as long as we get the...
No, as long as we're clear on the direction of the commission, we wouldn't necessarily need a motion, but a motion would let us know for sure where the commission is.
If you don't need a motion, then what are we going to do?
We just press on?
Well, you can direct staff, or you can do nothing.
Okay, so then we would not be allocating the funds?
Right. If you don't give us any direction, we wouldn't do anything.
Do you want a motion to reallocate them into 18? I mean, if I'm listening to Al, he's not gonna amend the budget, the 18 budget, to carry forward the 25 if we don't do something.
Yes.
Then I would move that we push the 25 into 18 for the building.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Denoff? Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Furtig?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hepstane. Motion carried. Moving on to number five under new business, school resource officer discussion. Consideration of memorandum 17-281. And we can hear some dialogue first. Thank you. Go ahead. You wanna go first?
Sure. Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, as some of you know, Dan Thompson has served as our school resource officer since November of 2014. He's been a part-time school resource officer for us, working with the Yankton School District in that capacity. And he will be retiring in May. And we are in the process of looking forward so that we can continue that position. You're gonna hear from the school district in a moment about the value of that position and what it's brought to our community and to our school and our kids. We did apply for a grant for a school resource officer, and we were unsuccessful in obtaining that grant. So as we move forward in visiting with Chief Paulson and members of the school district, what we'd like to do is share the cost of that position. That will have some budget ramifications for us because it is unbudgeted, but we feel that it's a priority and it's necessary. So that's what we'd like to visit with you all tonight. And we have folks from the school district here to tell you a little bit about how that program works and the benefits they've received from having an officer in the schools.
Okay.
Hello. Todd Rajic, Principal of the Yankton Middle School. As Ms. Nelson stated here too, we started this conversation back in 2013, in the 2013-14 school year, where we're gonna try to put something in place to have an SRO officer visible within the school system. And we were competitively looking for grants and looking for those opportunities in 13-14 as well. And we weren't able to secure any of those grants. And we've continued to look for those grants as well with the chief of police, as well as through our own school area grants as well. So we have, and we have been, and we will continue to seek those opportunities as well. As Ms. Nelson noted, we have not been successful with those yet, and we're gonna continue to work on and hopefully be successful. But back in 2013-14 school year, we had those talks. And in October 2014, a city, the city and school district had an agreement that was made. And we had some goals that we set out at that time. And this was in October 2014. Those goals were, is for this SRO, for a school resource officer, is building a relationship and bridging our community and our school together. The next one, foster educational programs to increase student awareness of the functions of law enforcement and our laws. Another goal that we had was build positive relationship and help with prevention of juvenile crime and disruptions in the school as well as the community. The next one, goal that we had, promote a safe school environment for children of Yankton. Then another goal, law enforcement recognition. So students see a police officer, it's a good person to see, to have and build a relationship with that and be able to recognize our law enforcement. And then another goal was to respond to disruptions... And then another goal was to respond to disruptions at school when needed. Another goal that we had was to have a presence within our buildings each and every day, and also have an input on enforcements with traffic outside schools and different controls such as school lockdowns, fire drills, and having that present each and every day for those different areas. Those were goals back in 2014 that were set. And I have, and I have to say, and our, and we have to say, that we have to thank our City Commission, Ms. Amy Nelson, Chief Paulson, Yankton Police Department, our Yankton School Board, Dr. Kendall, and our YSD faculty for this great partnership. And the next person that I have to thank is Officer Dan Thompson, for him coming in as well and laying the foundation of what this could look like back, and, and he took a, a risk, and he took some different things to come in, and it hasn't, it has been very, very successful for us as a school district, for us as a community, for us within our children of Yankton. The things that we've said with those goals and some examples, and I'm gonna invite Dr. Johnkey, Mr. Bestie, and Dr. Kendall up as well, if, if they have any comments, but some of the things that we have done is if you look at prevention, Officer Dan or our SRO is involved with our students at all different levels, working with different preventative type of activities, such as, as a middle school principal, the, something that we have a real challenge with is cell phones and the organization and what's appropriate for students to be communicating on cell phones for. And that's something that myself, I'm not always up to code on all of the laws, while our SRO can communicate that and rely that to a group of students in a, in a lecture hall setting, in a classroom setting, in a school law class at the high school, and can have conversations with that, what's legal, what's illegal, what's inappropriate, so forth. And it's a place for somebody to go. We also talked about building that relationships. At times throughout the day, we have students coming in saying, is Officer Dan available to visit? Is there an area where, you know, for, to help out with something that's happening outside of school, something that happened inside of school, so forth? So we can go on and on on the areas that have been successful with this. I guess our areas that we've been unsuccessful with is securing the funding for this program, and I think we all understand that this is something that is essential and an important part of our community, and it's something that we would like to continue with our partnership with the SRO in designing this program even further within the School District. So I'll open it up to Dr. Johnkey here as well to share a few things.
Thank you. Jennifer Johnkey, Principal of Yankton High School. And Mr. D stole most of my answers. He hit on a lot of them, but I think in the beginning of this program, we weren't exactly sure what to expect, and I know I heard a lot of comments about, oh, he's just going to arrest everybody all the time, and in fact, we've seen arrests of students go down significantly since Officer Dan has been in the buildings. And he's also, as Mr. D said, built those relationships. The students are always catching up with him in the hallway, and they'll say, Officer Dan, were you fishing this weekend? Did you go hunting? I saw you at my basketball game, things like that. He's also involved in the curriculum. He, in fact, let's see, Friday, I believe it was, he said, oh, I've gotta go catch up with this teacher because I'm gonna be in their classroom next week, and talking about the different concepts that he's presenting on. So it goes above and beyond just the law. He's really involved in the school and the school culture, and we've seen a lot of great changes since his addition to the Yankton School District.
Thank you.
We're gonna just open up for questions that you'd have for us. Any of us could answer those and so forth, so...
Any questions?
I have a question on the funding. First, I think it's a great opportunity for us to continue this program, but Amy, if you can maybe describe a little of the funding that, since we don't have the grants?
Sure, what we've preliminary worked out, and of course, this would need to be approved by the Yankton School Board, and as well, if, if you wanna see the agreement once negotiated, you could also make a final approval there too. But what we've worked out is that this would be a full-time position, split 75%, 25%. So 75% of the cost of benefits and salary would be the responsibility of City of Yankton, and 25% would be the responsibility of the School District. The reason it's not 50-50 is because in the summer months, when the school is not in session, that officer would work for us on patrol or as assigned by whomever their, their sergeant or, or the patrol lieutenant is. So we would also work on sharing the expenses of SRO-related travel and training, but non-SRO-related travel and training would be our responsibility, as well as equipping the officer, you know, with uniform, et cetera. So depending upon the rate at which they're hired, because there is a chance that, that individual is already within our police department, and then we would backfill with a patrol hire, but depending upon the salary in which they're hired at, it's looking to be about $46,000 or $47,000 for the city share, and then about 15 to 16 for the School District share. And we haven't budgeted that, so what we're thinking is that we will push one of the purchases of patrol car. We typically buy two patrol cars every year. Police Department thinks we can hold off on one of those purchases and get by until the following year when we can rebudget accordingly. So that's kind of the sacrifice we'd need to make. The Chief Paulson and I feel like it's one we need to make in order to get that individual in the school with Officer Thompson to do some training and, and build those relationships that the school is discussing with you.
Any more questions? Go ahead.
Comment, I think it's a great program. I think it was a huge deal to get Officer Dan. That was just huge. And I don't know how you interview to try and get that same sort of personality. I guess I'm curious, among commission, and maybe Amy, you have some insight, of the need to have a year-round versus weighted heavily towards the school year and maybe more of a fill-in position in the summer. The reasoning behind that is I think there's a, a lot of benefits to the Police Department to having that intervention and to sort of just have that good rapport with the kids, 'cause I think it lessens the amount of work that Police Department has to deal with the School District. We still have a responsibility to the School District, but you know, my thought is having that officer going to games, you know, having more like a teacher's schedule where the, the extracurriculars are part of the curriculum. Is that something that's been talked about or looked at?
I'll probably let Chief Paulson address that and, and the schedule there and how he'll handle that.
It has been addressed. It's part of the conversation that we have, moving into a full-time position with Officer Dan, only working 29 and a half hours a week. We weren't afforded that luxury, and it really is, comes down to being a luxury. So the hours will have to be adjusted. What we'll see, and I'll tell you, at the forefront here, when they start going to the games and, and working the security details, they're gonna be either overtime or accepting comp time. If they take comp time, we won't see an officer during the summer. They'll just take the entire summer off. So it's a big, big benefit to have them at the school, so the patrol side of it during the summer, it'll be limited. But the payoff is when they're in the School District and they're, and they're working those games. I think that continuity of having that face in the after-school activities is, is a stronger benefit than a full three-month officer in the summer.
Yeah, and I, I think Officer Dan's sort of not having that heavy-handed approach. I mean, I think that's kind of a good trend among law enforcement, is sort of trying to defuse situations versus let them escalate, but in particular among the kids. And so hopefully, we vote for this and, and go forward with it, but also that, that's part of the hiring process between the school, the city, and looks like some kids in there, someone that's really gonna have that rapport.
Yep. I would just offer the same accolades to Officer Thompson as well. And it's rare that you see a part-time employee come in on his own accord. It was his, it was his and Dr. Kendall's efforts to get the program started here in Yankton. And it's, like, again, it's rare that a part-time position sets the bar for our full-time position, but it's gonna be a good bar to have.
Any other comments or questions?
Question, since, since Officer Dan is there until May, we're really not filling this position until August?
Well, what, what we would like to do, what we see benefit is, is advertising that position within our current department, because Chief Paulson believes there is some interest with some already certified officers within our department for that position, and have the school and even some involvement with kids in helping in that hiring process. If that person exists there, to get them in the school shortly after the new year so that they can work with Officer Thompson, learn some of the things and programs that he does, and also build some of those relationships with Officer Thompson. Certainly, we could wait until August, we just see a value there in working jointly with him. Initially, we would like to have, or eventually, we'd like to have two full-time School Resource Officers, but we're doing what we think we can right now budgetarily and with the school, so that's up to the commission. If the commission would rather us wait, we just really see a value in him or her working with Dan during that time. And if that occurs, if we identify that person, they may not get right in the school in January, we'll have, we'll have a patrol position to fill, so it may be part-time, or we may have to work something out where they're working with Dan, or excuse me, Officer Thompson, part of the day or part of the week and still having patrol responsibilities, because we would then need to backfill if that person's hired off one of our squads.
My original thought was that we have a lawsuit pending, or a, I don't know, it's not a court case pending, but that, that could force us to fill another position or refill a position on the Police Department, and that, that we should wait with this, but what I'm hearing tonight is nobody really sees any benefit in waiting, and so...
I think the funding is, you know, if we come up with funding sources, we can always supplement, but you're, you're utilizing a squad car, you're not buying a squad car, and it fits in the budget, so what would be the point of...
Well, you'll have to buy him a car, won't you? We don't have extra cars.
But it's a replacement of cars, so we just would only replace one car instead of two.
Correct, and the School Resource Officer currently has a, a vehicle that they use at the school.
I would just like to say, I see it from the classroom perspective, Officer Dan has been a tremendous benefit to us at the high school, and he is, he'll like this word, he's a pioneer, right? So he has figured out how to fit into the system and how to fit in with the kids, and he's exceptional, and I think it would be in all of our best interests to have him mentor someone as soon as possible, given his retirement.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, the City of Yankton negotiate agreement with the Yankton School District to share the cost of full-time SRO.
I think one of the main selling points for this is the, the fact that it has been reducing arrests and keeping kids out of the juvenile justice system. I think that is a great benefit to them and the community. With that, I will second Dave's motion.
It's been moved and seconded, and do we want to, the, in your motion, do you want the city to negotiate, or do you wanna come back to this body again to, we'll probably have to approve the payment once we get the, figure out what it's exactly gonna cost, or not?
Yes, I can take the agreement. I'll take the agreement back before you.
Any other discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Johnson.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you for your comments, your energy. Number six, under New Business, Agreement with McGrath and North, PC Memorandum 17-283. Any second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number seven, under New Business, Yankton Transit Funding Memorandum 17-282. What's your pleasure?
Is this something that we can take out of carryover for next year?
This was one that we agreed to do earlier but didn't put into the budget, so this is just correcting that.
Right, so I'm asking, can we take it out of carryover? And I'm getting nods.
The recommendation is to take it from the BBB.
I think the original discussion, we were gonna take it from the BBB anyway.
Were we? I thought we were looking elsewhere, but...
I thought we were looking elsewhere as well.
I thought we were looking elsewhere.
I'm, I will make a motion that we take it out of our carryover for 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any more discussion?
Yeah, well, there goes your slush fund.
But saves ours.
Any, any more discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number eight, a bid award for the Water and Wastewater Chemicals Memorandum 17-270. What's your pleasure?
I move the memorandum.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number nine, under New Business, is a change order and closeout of Forest Main Project Memorandum 17-275.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Mayor Hopper.
Aye. Motion carried. Number 10, under New Business, Closeout of Highway 50 Utilities Memorandum 17-276. What's your pleasure?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number 11 is a bid aboard, bid board expenditure recommendation from the CVB Memorandum 17-279.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Hepstane.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number 12 is Uncollectible Utility Accounts Memorandum 17-274.
Move the memorandum. Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
My bomb.
Aye.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Hopper.
Aye. Motion carried. Number 13, under New Business, Planning Commission Recommendation Plat Review Memorandum 17-284 Regarding Resolution Number 17-66.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion or questions? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Johnson?
Aye.
My bomb?
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to number fourteen under new business, Planning Commission Recommendation Platt Review for Memorandum seventeen dash two eight five regarding resolution seventeen dash six seven.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Dave, are there any solid plans for this, or are they just preparing for if something came along?
Oh, I believe there's members of the audience here that would more specifically be able to answer that question, but yes, there is a development proposal on the site. I don't wanna steal their thunder, so if they wanna talk about it, they can.
You could, Dave. You'd be very good at it. I don't have to be so close to gross up here, but...
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Dan Speck.
Dan Speck, four sixteen Broadway, representing the applicant. TMA is located in the Yankton Mall right now, and they are, have an agreement with this, to purchase this property and build an eleven thousand square foot shop there, retail shop.
So when do they plan to break ground?
There's some utilities that need to be moved first, maybe get to that yet before Christmas, depending on weather, and then as soon as the plans can get approved and move forward.
Any more questions? Looks like it's built already.
This is, where this fine gentleman right here, he did all that.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Johnson?
Aye.
My bomb?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to number fifteen, change order and closeout of Second Street Calmer Project Memorandum seventeen dash two eight seven.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. My bomb?
Aye.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. Number sixteen under new business, change order and closeout of Maple Street Project Memorandum seventeen dash two eight eight.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
My bomb?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Finally, number seventeen under new business is a change order and closeout of Lift Station Project Memorandum seventeen dash two seven seven.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
How does Kyle feel about finally not having to work on this anymore? It's been a long road.
Any more comments or questions? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
My bomb?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Any other business? Not a entertaining motion to adjourn an executive session to discuss personnel and contractual matters under South Dakota codified law one dash two five dash two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming. What's left of you?